Welcome everyone who will call the meeting to order for the City Commission Meeting for November 20th. First thing on our agenda would be roll call.
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Locke.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Babey.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Thank you. Invocation. Do we have Reverend John Carroll?
No, I have a substitute for him. Thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
So we bow our hearts in prayer. Tonight we come to you with thankful hearts and grateful for the country we live in, for the county we live in, for the community that we live in tonight. We thank you for the ones that we're going to honor tonight at this City Commission Meeting. We thank you for their dedication and their sacrifices that they have made for the good of this community. And we just ask you tonight to give wisdom and guidance and direction to the City Council as they look over the business of this community, we pray. Thank you again for all your blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot of questions to do tonight, and I think for us commissioners, why don't we go down and join them on the floor so that we can shake their hands as we do this.
Round here.
You can both clap hands or...
Yeah.
Okay, first one up for tonight is a 10-year service award for Darcy Beavers. You can come out of the box, Darcy. Come on. There she goes. Darcy started with the Public Works Department on August the 27th, 2007, as the Public Works Secretary. That had long been shared, Kurt and I had shared Judy McIntosh for a lot of years, and as the workload got more and more, we split off and we hired Darcy in 2007. Family members, Orrin, three sons, TJ Junior and Chase, Chase is here, and one daughter, Jackie, who's also here. So this is where it gets interesting. Hobbies and interests, I had Darcy write her own, although I think I could have probably summed it up with the Jeep. But anyway, driving my Jeep, wishing I was driving my Jeep, and oh yeah, waiting for summer to take the top off the Jeep, camping and being out in the sun. And so anything else you'd like to add, I'm awesome to work with, which we all agree with that. That does not surprise me that she wrote that. So now I get to start. Darcy's one of the, she is one of the pleasant voices when you call Public Works and you get the pleasant voices, it's Darcy or Lex. Mainly has been Darcy for a long, long time. We often joke, if you want to know what's going on in our department, you find Darcy and ask her, because she can absolutely tell you. One of the cool things about Darcy is she always wants to understand what's going on, and I think that's so that she can make good excuses for the rest of us. So, no, that's not true. She wants to know what's going on so she can make sure that people in the community, when they call, know, so she's got good answers for everybody coming, going forward. So, 10 years. My next 10-year is Kevin Karst. Kevin came on in 2007 as well, started as a maintenance worker in Public Works Department, and as soon as the mechanics position opened up, Kevin took over the mechanics portion of our, of our department. And I will tell you, that job is thankless sometimes. You've laid in, under everything, you've laid in trash trucks, you've worked on snowplows and a foot or two of snow. So thankless is probably the best way to say that. Family members are Jennifer, Dylan, Portia, Carley and Shelby, and Jacob and Jacob. Hobbies and interests, and I've mentioned this one as well, old cars and hot robs, camping and hanging out with family and friends. There's not much Kevin can't work on, and even if it's something that he doesn't, hasn't really 100% for sure about what he's doing, it sure doesn't take very long to figure it out. So with that said, 10 years. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say that 2007 was a great hiring year for Public Utilities. We have three awesome guys that have been here for 10 years. And first I want to call up is Pat Fountain. Pat began his career at the City of El Dorado Wetlands Water Reclamation Facility in October of 2007. He received his Class 4 certification, State of Kansas certification, in March of 2010. Beyond his daily process control testing, Pat is a safety program coordinator on behalf of the wastewater treatment plant. Pat is also proud to be a member of the team that has won six Plan of the Year awards in a row, three Biosolids of the Year awards, the National George W. Burke Safety Award, which goes along with him being our safety coordinator. Pat and his wife Abby have been married for 15 years, they have two daughters, Courtney and Claire. He enjoys football, fishing, and spending time with his family and friends, and we could not do what we do without him. So thank you, Pat. Thank you. Okay, next, Jason Patty. It's really hard for me to believe that Jason's only been with the city for 10 years, because he's accomplished so much in the 10 years that he's been here. He came in May of 2007. He's a certified Class 4 wastewater operator, as well as a Class 4 water operator, as well as a Class 4 wastewater laboratory analyst. And so all of those are certifications you get through the State of Kansas. He's the current Chair for the Kansas Water Environment Association, that's the professional organization for wastewater. He's Laboratory Committee Chair for that. He's the past recipient from that organization, the Kansas Water Environment Association. He's the past recipient of the William D. Hatfield Award, and the youngest William D. Hatfield Awardee in the history of the Kansas Water Environment Association. Also the winner of the Crystal Prusible Laboratory Analyst Excellent Awards, and also the 5-S member. Additionally, the Wetlands Water Reclamation Facility, as I mentioned before, has won the, both the Plan of the Year, the Plan of the Year award six times in a row, and that's Best Plan in the State of Kansas, as well as the Biosolids Award, Best Biosolids Operation three times. The treatment plant was awarded the George Burke Safety Award last year. Jason is a graduate of Baker University. He's also a graduate of the Butler Community College Leadership Butler Class of 2012. He has completed the University of Kansas Certified Public Managers Program. He's the past President of the El Dorado Rotary Club, and also on the Board of Rural Water District Number One. And Jason is married to his wife Gretchen, who's here with their four children, Alyssa, Brooklyn, Blake, and Logan. Outside of work, he enjoys his family and many hobbies, which includes a hunting operation, preserve, he raises English stutters, and he also has a growing herd of cattle on his land. So, thank you, Jason. And last, Dave Wendell. Dave began his career with the City of El Dorado Public Utilities in water distribution and sewer collections in March of 2007. Dave is our eyes and ears for water distribution, sewer maintenance out in the field. And so while he's out performing about 300 locates a month, and you've all heard of Kansas Water Call, when you get ready to dig, he has to go out and locate all the water and sewer lines for the city. And he does that about 300 times a month. He also is responsible for all of our lift stations, 11 lift stations around town. He's the safety coordinator for water distribution, sewer maintenance, and also the confined space program coordinator. Dave and his wife Jody have three children, Rita, Chris, and Matt. And Dave is a connoisseur of smoking meats and barbecuing, and so that's what he does. And he's, he probably has done some for Thanksgiving, too, so.
Well, that's Wednesday.
Yeah. Thank you.
And that Wednesday. Shane McQuill was hired as a firefighter on June 2nd, 2007, having served as a student resident prior to that. During his tenure with the department, Shane worked his way up to his current position as a fire lieutenant. Shane has found passion for instructing training and the safety of personnel. He worked for Butler Community College for three years and is currently leading the training program for the department. Shane is instrumental in assisting his captain with the leadership and development of his shift, honing his leadership skills by completing leadership at Butler in 2017. In his spare time, he enjoys fishing, hunting, and automotive repair. Jonathan Jealouson, can you come forward, please? Troy Jealouson was hired as a firefighter on March 1st, 2002, having served as an El Dorado Fire Reserve since 1996. Troy climbed up through the ranks to his current position as the fire captain on C-shift. In his time here, Troy has completed many leadership programs, many of which he was the first in the department to attend. He graduated from Leadership Butler, Advanced Kansas, the KU Certified Public Management Program, and he is working to complete the Executive Fire Officer Program through the National Fire Academy. In his spare time, Troy enjoys spending time with his family, his wife Jamie, and his daughters, Tegan, Emily, and Anna. We're recognizing Troy for 15 years. Come on, I know you're here. So Rodney's getting his 15-year service award, started with the city in 2001 at the wastewater treatment plant. Worked there for two and a half years and then transferred on to the Public Works Department on the street crew. After that, he started working on, started working on traffic lights, traffic signs, and traffic signals. About four years ago, started, he started working on all the outdoor warning devices in town. Rodney's wife, Galene, is here tonight. Rodney enjoys camping, get this, jeeping, I know that'll be a surprise, outdoor stuff, kayaking, and helping people. Rodney's volunteer firefighter in Potwin, and he's one of the guys that when windy days come like this and the pagers go off, Rodney's the first one to come and go, can I go, can I go, can I go? So, and he says he's also trying to learn frisbee golf. So, I'll tell you a funny story about Rodney Reed. He's probably one of the only guys that you can call at 4 o'clock in the morning, or 3 o'clock in the morning, that sounds like he's wide awake and just sitting there waiting for your phone call. So, I don't know if that's normal or not, but it's certainly nice that you don't have to make that call to life. So, 15 years of service, thank you. Started in 1997 as a maintenance employee, moved up to an Operator 1, and then an Operator 2, and is currently working as an Operator 2 on our concrete crew. I'm going to read this, because I'll get this messed up. Brother Clayton, his wife Wanda, daughter Ashley, son Devlin, and grandson Seth. Larry enjoys watching all sports, especially Kansas State basketball. Oh, KU ba, I'm sorry, I thought it said KSU. No, KU basketball. Anything else you'd like to add, Larry says? It seemed like it was just yesterday when I started at the city, now I got 20 years in. He's right. It's been a good place to work, seen a lot of different people come and go. So, 20 years, thank you very much.
I'll read this. Kurt Bookout began his career with the City of El Dorado as the Water Treatment Superintendent in 1992. In 1995, he was given the additional duties of the wastewater superintendent, and finally promoted to Director of Public Utilities in 2000, where he's served the city for 17 years. Kurt has the State of Kansas Class 4 certifications in water and wastewater, and has been a board member and member of several other professional organizations that focus on teaching the proper ways to treat and manage water and wastewater, as well as champion water quality throughout the state, but also, and also across the United States. This year, Kurt received the Arthur Sidney Beddell Award from the Water Environment Foundation, as well as the Richard Porter Service Award from the American Waterworks Association, both in acknowledgement of his extraordinary service to those associations. Kurt has been married to Casey for 30 years. She's a teacher in the Anover School District, and they have two grown children, Cutter and Kylie, and three grandchildren. Kurt enjoys traveling with Casey, hunting, fishing, and photography, and he's been with the city for 25 years. Thanks a lot, Kurt.
Casey, that's my fault, I forgot to change the number.
This is one of those, it doesn't hurt to be the last one. Nelson, come on up here. Nelson Cohen has, is receiving his 30-year service award, and we're the last two, you and me. That's the way it started back in the day, there was, that was it. So, of the old department, that's about all that's left. So, Nelson started in the trash department in 1985, and worked there until 2001. And 2001, when we started curbside recycling, Nelson took over those duties for collection of all the curbside recycling materials, so 16 years of that program. Fishing, camping, and watching sports is what he enjoys, and I'll tell you that Nelson is a huge asset to our department, because as this program evolved over these 16 years, we couldn't have done it without you. So, 30 years, thank you.
Tell them to have punch and cookies.
Punch and cookies.
Yeah.
I think that's what they're going.
There are, they're probably leaving to have punch and cookies, which they've earned. Thank you, everyone, for your service.
Thank you.
They're like, there's cookies.
We're out.
I'd be doing the same thing. All right, next on our agenda would be personal appearances, we have none, so we'll move on to public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Agendas were sent out last week, everybody's had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Anything in there that needs special attention? Not entertained a motion?
I move the consent agendas presented before.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5 to 0. Next item on our agenda would be the Kansas Moderate Income Housing Agreement. I think we have been, we were notified last week that we were awarded from the, from the Kansas Housing, KHRC, another round of MIH. This makes three years in a row that we've been, the city's been awarded this fund.
We jumped one there, but I think we've had three out of four years.
Okay, yeah, three out of four years, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's quite, quite fortunate and very thrilled to get notice of this award. This is a program where the State of Kansas allocates $2 million statewide to help improve and grow moderate income eligible housing within communities in the state. So they went ahead and approved our application, and our application as written was a request of $190,000. The first round of it, we'd like to see it used as homebuyer down payment assistance in the form of $10,000 per unit to two-bedroom-and-two-bath homes, and $15,000 down payment assistance for three-bedroom-and-two-bath homes. Plan on opening up that application timeline for around 60 days, and then making the funds available up to $10,000 per unit for any type of new housing, be it rental or owner off the tub. Tonight, we're asking you to consider to allow the city manager to sign the agreement with the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
That's great, thank you, Scott. Any questions? It's a great program, I think we're fortunate to be, to be multiple recipients of that. So kudos to, to the staff and all of them. We're involved with writing that grant, so, thank you.
And El Dorado Inc. as well.
And El Dorado, yes.
Our plan is to do a kind of a blitz here right before Christmas and let the word out to any folks that are interested or thinking about building a new home, that they go ahead and start considering that, because we do need those folks up front that are willing to be owners. Only real requirement is that they meet the moderate income guidelines. For a family of four, and I pulled this up on my phone real quick, just to give you an idea, moderate income, a family of four could be anywhere from $81,600 a year down to $32,640 within that range.
Great, thank you.
Scott, you said we're going to, for 60 days?
Correct.
Okay. What happens after, if we go 60 days and we've still got time? What do we do?
First come, first served, $10,000 per unit.
Okay. So I need a motion to allow the city manager to sign the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a grant, a grant agreement with the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for the moderate income housing program.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Short agenda, we're already due reports. Advisory Board, anybody had a chance to meet or tell us what you're doing outside of commission meetings?
Airport hasn't met yet. CVB meets tomorrow. Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec met last week, and basically they spent their time reviewing the master plan and looking at projects that, small projects that they could do. And, so they kind of came up to agreement, and they have a list of things that they're looking at, working on, leading up to bigger projects.
Good. I think we're going to also, that list and that work goes to some of the sales tax advisory board stuff, so that we can try and allocate funds as we can.
There was a long list that are going to start projects in 18 that were approved through this budget process, and then, then we'll, I think, well, I'll let you speak for the new, I haven't been to those meetings.
Yeah, Kevin gave them a list, a pretty lengthy list of things he had been thinking about, and they had a couple ideas as well, and so we will, they, they wanted to wait on the sales tax projects for a recommendation until December to see if they had a few more people, because we only had about half the board there last, last time. So, waiting for a few more people before they make that recommendation, but they are working on it.
Good, thank you. Thanks.
No Prairie Trails meeting, just wish everybody safe and happy Thanksgiving.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Nick is the new grandpa.
I do have a new grandson, he's up Saturday.
Congratulations.
I don't have anything to report.
Just youth commission, we met, it was a smaller meeting, there's a lot of activities going on, so we were missing a lot of kids, but nothing new.
I attended, thank you, everyone. I attended a annual meeting for the Gray Wichita Partnership, which was, I filled in for, well, attended that, which was an interesting, interesting annual meeting, and some of the, the speaker was from, from Des Moines, Iowa, and talked a lot about regionalism and the effort that's working there, so I was there as a part of the brief and such, so I, you know, thank you for that opportunity. El Dorado Inc. met last week, we talked a little bit about some strategic planning in that, in that organization, really kind of talked also about honing in on targeted marketing and targeted, marketing's the right word, but making sure that we're not just responding to anybody who acts. A lot of things kind of come to light in this whole Tyson discussion, both good and bad, and it's been a very healthy conversation about what might be right for El Dorado. Couple other things I've got, not necessarily reports, but we're wrapping up, there's only a couple more meetings left of this commission, we start a new, a new commission in January. Chase, I hope you're here for December some, we can, so we can say thanks. But as we do that, I'm reminded that we probably ought to refresh our, our goals, so I guess I would, I would suggest, or I'd like this commission to consider and give David the direction to go ahead and start the planning for a strategic planning retreat for us in January sometime, so that we can look at the goals that we created and create new ones, maybe refresh the ones we have. So if it's, it's okay with this commission for David to start that planning process, we'll look, look for some dates, probably a Saturday again like we did before, if that's okay with everybody, and we would have more to come. Any other comments or questions from the commission on that, doing something like that, or do I agree with it?
Sure.
Okay. We'll do that. I think also, the other two notes I have, recycling program, and within your city manager's report, whether you have anything specifically on some of that survey update, but also while we're here, we might talk a little bit about December meeting. Sometimes we skip the last meeting in December. Tabitha and David, let us know what we need to be anticipating there.
We usually start, we usually talk about that at the first meeting in December, so on the 4th, we'll let you know if we have everything covered that we need to cover for November.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Maybe give you the 18th option.
Great. That's all I got, thank you.
As the mayor was mentioning, the, we have prepared a recycling survey, we're going to be sending that out here hopefully next week. We're kind of waiting on really the post office, we're actually going through a third party to make that all happen, and hopefully we'll be able to get those out here this week, if not early next week, so that we can get those started. So everyone will be receiving a, an envelope from the city with the survey and a stamped envelope, so they'll just complete the survey, put it back in the stamped envelope, mail that off, and we ask that people that want to participate, get their responses mailed in by December 15th, so we can get those assembled and get the report back to you all.
all for your information. We do have five police officer openings, but hopefully, we'll be able to fill a couple of those here soon. So if there, but we will still have a couple of spots still open. So if you know, or if you know of anyone, or if there's anyone out in the public that wouldn't be interested in serving on El Dorado's Police Department, then they should go to hrepartners.com and look at the position, and if they're real interested, fill it out, and maybe they'll get an interview. So again, we have, we have a couple of positions that hopefully we'll be able to fill. We had some interviews on Friday, excuse me. And, but we'll still have some openings. So we still continue to try to get police officer positions filled with that department. Thanks, with the city hall and city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving, and also the day after Thanksgiving this week. So we do have an update to the trash schedule. The Thursday trash cycle will actually be done on Wednesday, and then the Friday cycle will be done as normal. So people know what's going on with that. And then just a big update on the Grandview Elementary School site development. The sewer is going in, so as that work progresses, where, or the new site will be, kind of gets a little bit further along as we progress forward on that project. So good things are happening with that. So with that, I'll take any questions if I still have a voice.
I've got a question for either Brad or the chief. Do we know who hit the traffic controller in Summit and Central? Did they have insurance?
All right. I guess I would also offer a public service announcement as well. Thanks for that report. If no more questions. Brad has been doing, getting up early and driving around and posting some things on Facebook, so I actually appreciate that, as we talk about our recycle program and a lot of the things that we do and what it, the great asset that it is. I appreciate that, that pointing out some, educating the public a little bit on what's the proper way to use that. So I would ask folks to, to find the Facebook page, it's Public Works, and pay attention. So thank you for doing that. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Mayor, I move adjourn.
All right. Moving in second to adjourn. Any comments? Any comments? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.